Good evening and welcome to the March 12, 2018 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one discussion topic and it's the, an update on the new police station and mayor and city council chamber design elements. Dennis, take it away.
I have with me tonight David Schrader of Schrader Architecture Group and he will be helping with the presentation. Basically, I wanted to give you a little bit of background. I think most of the council members are familiar with where we were at on this. In terms of the agenda, we will provide an update on the police station and then actually go through some of the floor plans and council chambers with some perspectives and interior views. And then, much of the focus of tonight is really on the construction of the dais and then also what happens in the community room in terms of audiovisual options. And then, we'll wrap up with kind of here's where we're at and where we'll be in terms of the overall project for the police station and the council chambers rooms. So just a little bit of background, basically, you know, we purchased the building in 2016. We've been meeting with the council since 2015 in a series of meetings talking about whether to move the council chambers to 16 South Summit or leave them here. Through that, we've gotten to the point that we've shown them at 16 South Summit and are looking to try and do kind of the final design elements with regard to those spaces. And with that, I'll turn it over to David and he'll kind of run through the site plan again, run through some of the floor plans and then the perspectives exterior and interior.
Welcome, David.
Hey, thank you. Good evening. I hope you find this part enjoyable. It's always fun to see a building start to come to fruition, so hopefully you'll have the same excitement that the team here has had as we've gone through the process. So, the right-hand side is South Summit Avenue. The top is Old Town Avenue and on the western portion of this is Falk's Corner Avenue against which the current police station sits. And so, we've kind of showed the bounds of the property with the yellow line to give you a sense of what that site is from above. And of course, city council has seen this, so you know what that site looks like. But directly across the street is where we are sitting right now, city council chambers, and of course, the old post office and some of the new development across Old Town Avenue. So, we're going to start with the existing site and the portions of the site that are reconfigured for the proposed use here. You'll see a lot of the same functions continuing on in the site. For instance, all of the parking lot area, we do a decent job of rehabilitating that area, relighting it, and adding some stormwater management to that. But the configuration as much as you see it now, and so you'll see some of that in the site plan to follow here. The second part of this, though, is the south side of the building is really where we end up locating quite a few of the new police uses. And so, some of the Sally Port and secure areas end up in that portion of the site. And so, the result is that south side of the site actually becomes our secure fenced area as well. And you'll see that that ultimately, from the site standpoint, is where the majority of change comes from. The corner of Old Town Avenue and South Summit Avenue, we maintain quite a bit of the landscape architecture that goes on around there. And then, the other part of this is the old approach to the backside of the site. From the parking lot gets modified into a new plaza design, and so we'll share that with you as well. So, those are the major components of the existing site that either remain or get varied by the proposed site plan. You'll also see that the landscaping is reused and enhanced, and so those are the pieces of the puzzle. We have been through planning commission. We also went through the historic district commission presentations, and so they've also, this has been shared with both parties there as well. So, this is that same view of the site plan. Again, Old Town Avenue on the top and South Summit along the eastern part of the site. And the two red dots here are the Sally Port addition on the south side of the building and the generator addition. And you'll start to see in the renderings how that starts to configure itself. Some of the other things that happened to the building, remember, it's about a 48,000 square foot building and we renovate much of the interior, but we're adding some vestibule entries. So, you'll get double door entries into each, the northeastern corner and the southwestern side of the building. Again, the plaza area that we talk about here, we have a blow-off of that as we get into it. Some of the other site configuration changes, there is a fence that will run, maybe I should start on the front side here. There's a fence and a sliding gate that will run across in front of the Sally Port addition, down the edge of the new parking lot here, and then it also runs along the south side of the property separating you from your neighbors, and then up and around behind the old police station and across the parking lot with one more sliding gate, it's a security gate, across these parking spaces, which will separate some of the public parking from the police parking, although we are talking about maintaining some of these parking spaces also as police. But the majority of the site is set up to be used as you folks see fit going forth. And then, the fence continues around and back up into the Sally Port. So, an officer coming into the property will come through one of the directions. We essentially think that much of the traffic will be one-way from the parking lot in and then potentially out onto Summit, but they have the opportunity to open the gates from either side and drive in from whichever side makes sense. So, traffic will go through into the secure area. They'll park in one of the spots, or they'll bring someone in through the Sally Port addition. And then, they have the opportunity to access the building either through the Sally Port or there will be a gate to the plaza at the back that they can come through. And then, there's a smaller, less, or more discreet door into the police area. The major access point and what the entire plaza aims towards is the city council entry. And so, the intent there is that for an evening activity in this building, parking hopefully will be available for that use and folks will be able to come in through that new plaza area into the back of the building and into the city council chambers. And then, of course, it's up to you as to how you unlock the building. The front corner will also allow that availability because the lobby and the corridor in the ground floor of the building will continue through the building as it, much as it does today. Last part of the site here besides some of the landscaping that we'll talk about is the new police outbuilding, which I think we may have just want to chat real quickly about. It encroaches into the setback of the property.
So, for the council's knowledge, we'll actually be bringing back to you next week, on March 19th, a waiver from the setback, 15-foot setback will be encroaching six feet into that. And the reason for that is there's the school building that's on the adjacent property. Only a small portion of it butts our property. The rest of butts the neighboring commercial property. But because the whole building has classroom windows, we need a variance from that 15-foot setback. The portion that we're actually asking for the variance for actually backs up to the gym, which doesn't have any windows in it. But because the rest of the building has windows in it, we need to get the setback variance or waiver from the council. And that will come back on March 19th.
So, the renderings that we're going to show after the site plan will help, probably worth a thousand words. But we will enhance the front corner on Old Town Avenue and South Summit. You'll see what we're doing there. We'll be redoing this plaza area. And I guess one point to make about this is the entry vestibule at the back is actually between 18 and 20 inches higher, which is tough to perceive as you look at the building today, but it's 18 and 20 inches higher than the actual parking lot area. And so, we're able to slope the concrete down towards the parking lot area. And what happens is these benches start to emerge at 18 to 22 inches high from these planted areas, and you'll see that in the larger plan. And so, I think if it's, if you're okay with the site plan, we'll move into the renderings, which are probably better descriptions. Okay? So, the first view is the view from the corner of South Summit and Old Town Avenue. And the building looks much as it does today, however, you'll see that there's a new weather vestibule under the 16. You'll also see some signage that, the signage is there just as a placeholder. This is to be determined as we go. We're going to build it in conformance with the city zoning requirements. The intent is to kind of pull out all of the soil and all of the old, whatever's left in there of landscaping in the front three planters, drop in four flagpoles there for all of the different flags, and then to put in a couple of granite markers, one with the city and one with the police, so that they kind of demarcates from the corner there in a little park-like environment on the corner. We have on the, on the Old Town Avenue area, there is a new egress point that comes out of the community room. And so, the intent there will be to provide a second means of egress out into a slightly extended planter. And that slightly extended planter is, is the brick wall that you see running across right at Old Town Avenue there. As we said, the weather vestibule is new and we are proposing an entire window replacement to the building along with a masonry cleaning and some repointing and some cast stone replacement where the cast stone has cracked beyond repair. So, you'll see some replacement of some of that. You'll see a general brightening of the facade from the cleaning. And then, of course, the window replacement is going to enhance it as well. The difference between the windows today and the windows tomorrow is that what the team is proposing is an anodized aluminum color versus the green. So, we'll maintain and actually will be repainting all of the green aluminum panels, but we're going to end up putting in an anodized aluminum window system just to take the building to the next generation here. So, that's what you'll see in all of the renderings. Because the other shot was during the day, we thought we'd show you what the building may look in the, like in the evening, and it's pretty important to see that because there are a number of components within the building that are going to require some spandrel panel or darkened glass areas. Now, during the day, that darkened glass looks like a window with the lights turned off inside. And so, it won't really appear as heavily during the daytime because of course, glass mostly shows its reflective nature during the daytime. At night, however, these happen to be some of the locker rooms up on the third floor. What we're doing is proposing that above the officers' heads and above the locker areas, we'll go ahead and bring daylighting in, and that's why you see the actual light areas here. And from head area down, which is that mullion level, it'll end up being spandrel glass. So, it will start, you will start to notice the spandrel panels in the evening as you look at the building with the lights on. There's one other area where that happens, and that is the ground floor, particularly in the holding areas. This portion of the building is actually the holding areas, so there's masonry behind that to provide full, secure holding within that portion of the building. And so, the intent there, at least right now, is to provide spandrel panels in the glazing in that area as well. The last part here is this proposed entry, and it's not a new curb cut, it's the same curb cut that's currently there across to the parking lot, right across from the building that we're sitting in. But that will become the secure sliding gate. And then, the portion that you're seeing with the cast stone enclosure and the brick, that is the new Sally Port portion to the building. And so, that's where the cruisers will bring folks in, the side of the building that most of us don't want to have to approach from, but that's what that portion will be. And you enter that building there, the doors go down and you've got a prisoner in a secure holding area at that point. We're also seeing some slight enhancement to the landscaping along here and a planter that will allow that gate to slide across and behind. So, it gives you a sense of what the building looks like in the evening.
So, is that portion, that street side, kind of just behind where the car is, is that concrete color?
It is.
Or is it actual concrete or?
It's a precast concrete or a cast stone, and it will match the cast stone band across the top, or something like that. We're going to finalize the colors as we go here. One of the challenges here was to find a way to somewhat elegantly enclose the generator that is running this whole building. And the generator is massive. And so, we dealt with a whole series of configurations and ultimately, a lot of the site utilities run through, this is at, the right side of the site is actually the south side of the site. And the utilities all run through that access point that you guys drive across if you drive from this parking lot over to police and cut through the parking area. So, we were working very carefully on creating a facade that works with the facade of the existing building to enclose the generator. And so, what you see is the generator enclosure portion, which will match our roof screening. We're going to replace the roof screening around the existing, or the proposed HVAC equipment. And you can start to see how that new weather vestibule on the backside, which becomes city council chambers, looks. It's an inviting entry. The police entry is downplayed to try to, it's, it's for the officers and it's a nice entry for the officers, but we're not trying to play that portion up because that's not where the public goes. And then, you can sort of start to make out how the new plaza will look at the back with the nice landscaping and the planter walls as you run around the perimeter. Any questions on the renderings?
Are the planter walls functional?
They're all seating walls as well.
So, I just have a quick question. I'm sorry, are you done?
I guess. Actually, no. So, do they provide a security element for the building?
As a matter of fact, thank you. They absolutely do. So, the fact that they're in the 20-inch-high ratio, they actually will stop vehicles. They have the ability to stop vehicles. And then, there's one opening for the handicap access area up, and that will actually have a secure bollard in it, removable bollard, but secure bollard. So, they all stop vehicles from running into the building. Good point.
So, you mentioned in, I think, the last one or two slides, there was a rendering showing the Sally Port here. Yes, thank you. So, this is the curb cut that exists now that vehicles use to drive through to the other parking lots. Will there be pedestrian throughput here, or will that be completely cut off so that if someone were to park on the south end of the public parking lot, they would have to walk all the way around the building, say, to get to our current city hall?
Yes, there will not be pedestrian access. You'd actually have to go down to where you should cross anyway, which is where the crosswalk is. So, it will actually hopefully enhance the safety of that. You know, there, I have met with the school adjacent because they also use that as kind of their cut-through often on pickup and talk through that. They actually think that's an improvement too, from their perspective. Again, they will not have, able to block that intersection there, but they think that should be okay with them. But yes, you would have to go down to the main entrance on South Summit to get into the building.
And on a related note, how many parking spaces are in the proposed design for the parking lot for the public's use?
So, we have 150 total parking spaces, and of those 20 are in the secure area. So, 130 remain up in the general parking area.
Okay. How does that compare to what we have for public use here at city hall and our current parking lot?
It's actually probably about the same if you don't include all the spaces down at the, what we consider the annex by the train station.
Got it.
And again, it's important to keep in mind that, you know, this isn't theoretically a public lot that commuters can park in and stuff. It'll be somewhat controlled in that aspect. We are still trying to debate how much of that lot remains more open to the public on a two-hour basis or something like that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So, do we anticipate additional pedestrian traffic between this building and where we are right now? And if so, are we thinking about how to improve the safety of the crossing of the road there, other than flags, I guess?
There will be some because there'll be other services in the third floor eventually. But again, most of the police department doesn't come over here on a regular basis and we don't go over there on a regular basis. So, I don't think there's a whole lot of increase from that perspective. Again, I think we will actually create a better situation than we currently have because I'll be honest, what I do when I go to the police station, I cross at the driveway entrance where there is no crosswalk. So, we'll be forcing people to go to the crosswalk because that's going to be the entrance into the police station and the city facilities.
Okay. Okay, two more images and then we're back into the floor plans. So, one more view for you is this is actually a little bit elevated, so this is what it would probably look like from the second floor of the police building and proposed building across the street here. Back to the ancillary building. And the intent there is to use the same materials, the cast stone base, the brick midsection, and then, in this case, there's a stucco upper in the pediment. And it would be a standing seam roof building and then stucco on the sides. So, the, the architecture of the building matches at least the color and material of the 16 South Summit building. One other portion that you can't see further off to the right-hand side, there is a dumpster enclosure proposed that has the same exact look as the ancillary building at the back. There is a secure fence line made up of metal fencing, and it's a horizontal metal fencing that runs between the parking lot you just asked about and the secure parking area. And then, the balance of the fence around between the, your property and the adjacent property is a metal with a wood fence infill.
What's the fence made of?
Which one?
The one that separates the police yard from the public parking.
It's, it's between the police, it's actually a metal product.
Aluminum, steel?
In this case, we're going to go with a light steel product, anodized. I'm sorry, painted powder-coated paint. This is the proposed plaza and back to those points that were made earlier, these are the, the bench areas that kind of come out of this dropping concrete. And they are cast stone with brick front to match the balance of the walls around the perimeter of the building, and then one comes along the edge of the generator. There's a bollard that you can just make out right here, and that will be the other secure bollard to make sure that nothing can penetrate this front walk area here to get to the building. So, that's the secure frontage to the backside of the building. And the plaza will be essentially concrete with brick striping in it. So, it'll have almost the same effect but flipped from the front plaza and a little bit lighter in color will be the look. And then, of course, there's low landscaping around the perimeter there so that we deal with some of the SEPTED requirements to try to keep vegetation low so nobody can hide behind those as the police come in and out of the building. Couple of the other pieces that you see here, we've got some basic bollard concepts. These are the lighting bollards that would run along the edge of the parking lot. And then, the, we had the same concept for the cast stone along the plaza side, and actually, this is bike parking. So, the bike parking is here. There's motorcycle parking further to the left, and I guess I didn't talk about things like the charging stations for lead. We have several of those in the parking lot as well as some of the high-efficiency vehicle parking. But along this face, so that it doesn't appear too castoney, as if there's too much concrete and cast stone, we're proposing some kind of vegetation wall so that that has more greenery that climbs up from the plaza area, so it appears a little bit more green. We've not finalized all of the furniture or the courtyard furniture products, but you're starting to see some of the ideas we have for, for the outside there. So, if you're okay with that, we'll slide inside. So, the development of the first floor plan, and we kind of turned the plan just a little bit, the lower right-hand corner is that corner of Summit and Old Town. And then, the back, as you can see, is the plaza in the upper left-hand corner. And so, the corridor that divides the two and contains both the elevators, as well as if you come down this hallway, the public bathrooms, there's a front lobby off of the front corner plaza that will essentially, it'll probably be used more for this community room as well as the police walk-up windows, and those will be ballistic walk-up windows. My guess, but again, it's how you use the building, is the majority of people may park in the back and come in through this back entry through the plaza we just talked about. There's a waiting area out in front of that plaza, and you folks remember from a presentation some time ago, a, more or less a, a room at the back for both conferencing, and you'll see in the next plan, we also have more rows of seating set up so that it's an overflow room for more seating should you have that many folks attend. Then, there's a glass wall between the two, which you'll see in renderings here shortly. And then, this is the council chambers with the dais around the backside or the right-hand side here, a caucus room or a breakout room in the back of that. And then, the audiovisual control room is the room right here behind the wall, behind the dais as well. And then, there's some presentation areas as well as staff areas on the side, presentations in the front. And I think the renderings will do a little bit better job at this. On the left-hand side of the plan, and I won't go too far into it, but this is that police entry with a lot of their access. There's a stairway setup that goes all the way up through the three floors of the police, and this will become their central circulation zone. The red area, and not intended to be red, but that's the holding and processing area. The Sally Port is this tan area off to the side, and then, part of the police administration and evidence areas are in the center of the building here. So, we'll focus a little bit further in on the zone here on the upper right-hand corner in the next. Now, this view breaks away from the conference room and just shows you how seats might line up in that room to show you the additional quantity of seats that we could potentially propose there. There's a glass wall that splits the two, and then, the dais is up here. It's raised about the same height that you're currently raised today. And then, we of course are going to get heavily into the discussion of what these look like. But just close up, the AV control room is in this area. There's racks for the audiovisual controls and then the caucus room at the back here. This was the one, the one door that I mentioned, that's an egress into the parking lot. You need two means of egress from that space because of the size of the space. You also need an egress point from the council overflow chambers here, so that's why this door is here. We're setting up a way to lock that door and only release it if, if there's an emergency of some sort. So, you will have the ability to, to create only one entry point unless there's an emergency. There's a kitchen area between the council lobby and this community multipurpose room. And we're going to get a little bit further into that plan as well. The diagram that you're seeing has it set up for a work session, and you start to see the screens so that they're on two different walls. One is behind that work area, another one is off to the right-hand side. That'll be so that this building, this room becomes multifunction. And of course, it's set up for seating, but this thing can be set up any way you want. We'll start to talk about cameras in a couple of shots here.
Where do coats go?
We, where do coats go?
In terms of the council?
Yeah, we have a coat room now.
So, we would actually put those in the caucus room, so that room would be available to the council to put your briefcase or your coat prior to the meeting because it wouldn't be used in that fashion during the meeting.
And then, there's a couple of closets around that portion too, on the backside. Then, we have a larger storage space here off of the multipurpose room for storage of tables and chairs and whatnot. Okay?
So, did the rendering of the overflow room have a table in it and this one doesn't? And where, where does the table go?
Yeah, so, and it probably goes into that storage room because it's made up of various components. So, they're flipped and they're wheeled and we're able to move them around the spaces. So, the intent would be there to use the storage space for the different tables that you may right now be using. Matter of fact, depending on how you set these rooms up and depending on what furniture we buy, our intent, at least right now, is this furniture that's shown right here in the multipurpose space and these conferencing may be the same tables, and you just interchange and use them as you see fit.
And the room that's labeled "report room," what does that mean?
Oh, that's one of the police functions, and so, I would go in there for fingerprinting. I'd go in there to write reports. I'd go in there to have a report taken by the officers, so it's more of a police function.
So, where's the press room for Peter?
Somebody asked. We will have press hookups, which we don't have done very well in this room, so there will be locations where they can hook up. We've had a lot of discussion about where's the best place for that, and that's still in the process of design.
Dennis is thinking about you.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. So, just a view of what that lobby through might look like, and so, you're starting to see some of the wood paneling that we've got designed for that that flows also into the council chambers. Very bright access point to council chambers. And on the left-hand side here is that conferencing space and overflow space for council chambers. And we're finalizing furniture, but you can start to see some of the thoughts about furniture that's located in that area and then light fixtures and so on. So, it should be a contemporary design matching the materials that you folks were all looking at sometime back in December, November. This is the view that you'd have if you were sitting about four rows, five rows back in the council chambers. One of the big challenges has been how to integrate the screens that you have above you here without making them look like they're screens in addition to. And so, what we've been working through here is a way to try to create a screen on a product that comes down that matches our ceiling. And so, the ceiling kind of flows over the head, rises at the point where the screens go, and then, we're able to create these mounting areas for those that we can either pull the screen off or flip those up to access the screens or do whatever we have to. So, we're in the middle of detailing that. But the intent is to create- But the intent is to create a place where those screens go and it's two-sided. It's one for you guys to look that direction and one for us is from the outskirts here to look back at the screens so that we get the same presentation you are. And you see the podium areas and presentation tables, the staff areas on left and right. And at least right now, we're talking about a dais that has kind of a nice band of quartz-type product along the top and then the wood behind with whatever the emblem ends up being and whatever color we end up doing it in. So that's yet to be determined by you folks as well. The right-hand and left-hand areas here are the areas that we drop on the sides to allow for the HVAC and lighting so that we can keep as much out of the ceiling as possible here. And you'll remember from all these different ideas that we went through with you folks for the council chambers, the one that we arrived at was pulling two columns out to the perimeter as far as we could to get structure across the top here to make up for the column that we take right out of the middle of that space. And I think you see that it's pretty nicely integrated now, so those two columns are integrated to the point where you almost don't know that they're there, they're part of the architecture. The furniture is being developed, but you'll see something similar to that in the end. I guess the one other thing is we've been working very hard with the audiovisual consultants on the project and they've been working in the acoustics with us of the space. So one of the things that we're talking about is a series of, I'm trying to get the cursor to work here, series of blind systems that pull down or drop down electronically over the windows and those will actually have an acoustical value to them. So everything that we're doing here is all working towards both acoustically treating the space as well as setting it up for AV use as possible. And to the point made earlier, the rendering we actually show is a rendering with the conference room tables in it. I think we have a black and white that shows you how it looks when the seats are just set up as if we were sitting back there in overflow. But it does allow a very nice continuous space here from the council overflow into the council chambers. And again, there's that door that we did have to set up for egress from the space because of the square footage and the occupancy. But nice views back to the dais and back to the audiovisual. There'll be a door where the cursor is right now that goes back to the caucus room and this door goes over into the community room. Both lockable. And this is just a view that shows you as if the seats were set up in the council overflow to give you a little sense of the seating.
Keep in mind, I think we've been looking at it a long time, so sometimes we don't always see what the images are. The ceiling will actually be a wave. In one form or fashion, it will wave like up and down in order to integrate kind of the steel beams that we're needing in the space and the lighting in the space and then the monitors.
Can you point to that, the wave?
So up in here, you can slightly see that the wave is going up at this point. It actually comes back down and then goes back up again.
I think if you go back a couple renderings, there was one, yeah, this kind of shows a little bit.
You can kind of see that this is a wave, so it'll be integrated into that and perforated in order to help with some of the noise. Because one of the big issues that we have is you try not to have very many flat planes in a space. So the ceiling is one of the ones that's the flattest, you can't do anything about the floor typically. But the back wall and the front wall and this really helped with some of the acoustics issues that we were having.
So the wave is like a hanging sound panel off of a floor?
Yeah, it'll be a metal type panel.
But then it crystal back to it.
So that's really the overall of the interior of the space and so now we wanted to kind of look at the dais construction.
Before you move into that, Dennis, just a note, I like the clean look of the design, but I just wanna note that, you know, sort of traditionally, we've had a lot of framed photographs and other paraphernalia in our chambers and any thought as to how this new chambers would accommodate that or maybe decisions to not have it accommodate that because we wanna keep it looking clean?
We do have, if you can kind of see, our hope is to keep it fairly clean if we can and maybe focus on the current council or the mayor and the current council in terms of finding graphic images for them, whether they be photographs or paintings. We do have in most of our spaces, at least at this point, kind of an art rail where we could on a temporary basis hang some art. We're still having a lot of discussion about this product and whether it should be wavy or it should be a flat wall panel that allows for more flexibility in that. But we are trying to keep this space fairly clean, just from a timeliness standpoint and trying to keep it updated gets very difficult.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I just wanted to ask the question so that we're at least thinking about it, but I do like the cleanness of the look and I wouldn't wanna clutter up the walls with stuff given, you know, how nice the renderings look, but at the same time, we certainly need to think about what we're gonna do with things that we have.
The hallways will be similar to where we could do that if we wanted to do that on a case basis or move them so we're not puncturing holes in the wall all the time and the community room hopefully will have that same feature.
So are the orange seat cushions and sand-colored floor negotiable?
Those are just graphic representations. We have semi-picked the carpet, in fact, you guys have seen samples of that and then the furniture, we have not picked the furniture.
The design, the contours, much the same?
We'll try to pick something that's a little bit more timely, that might age well over time, but it's really difficult to do in seating because usually timeliness equates to lighter color, which is not always your friend when it comes to chairs and other items.
Did we abandon, I know there's some discussion last time we came in about pull-away partitions between the overflow room and this?
Yeah, we looked at that, it was pretty much cost prohibitive and it also causes more issues with the acoustics because then the room dynamic changes. At least with this scenario, the consultants can look at the acoustics and be assured of what it's like when the curtain is open. Again, for the majority of the time that this room is functioning without overflow, there'll actually be a curtain that comes down in front of that window to help with the acoustics, similar to the shades that come down for the windows. Does that make sense? So there'll be a giant roller shade that's tucked up in the ceiling that will actually come down and screen the conference room during your normal meeting, because normally we wouldn't need overflow. It would only be opened up when we actually set up the room in this fashion.
Great.
So in terms of the dais construction, there are really kind of four elements that staff and the designers are weighing and developing the construction of this particular item. Those are really, how important is it for the monitors to be not visible? I know that's been a comment I've heard from a number of council members that our current configuration, you actually see the back of the monitors. The second would be kind of the height of the monitor relative to the dais and then also the angle. As you can see, we set up some examples of how we could envision the monitors being angled. And then based upon that, we think we'd be able to hide the monitor. It's all just a matter of degree. And so the two scenarios that you can see here is where we are providing a flat surface and then the second version is where we're providing a well and wanted some feedback on whether there was a preference for one or the other. Also on the angle, if you're okay with the angle as we're proposing, because that's really critical to the next kind of aspect is visibility of the mayor and council from the public view. Again, it's not typically the camera view we're concerned about because the camera view is usually taken above, but it's really the view from a person seated within the gallery behind us. And so we have a couple of versions of what that looks like. I wanna keep in mind that we're talking about really varying degrees of five to nine inches. So in some versions of this, it's hard to tell that there's a change. And what we're hoping for is you can kind of give us an idea of what you think is more important. We're not asking you to approve the exact measurement like the dais will be at this height or the monitor will be at that height, but given what you guys find as priorities, we would try to find the best solution for those aspects, weighing all those together and coming up with the best solution we can.
So in option two, where there's a well, it looks like it changes the angle of the monitor?
It could, it could give you a different monitor angle because we have more height to play with between the bottom of the table in terms of the dais and the top of the dais.
And based on what these test sites that you have set up in front of us look like, the angle is a little severe right now and it's picking up a fair amount of glare from above?
Agreed.
The one thing to keep in mind too is the lighting will be a hundred percent, not a hundred percent better, will be a lot better than the current facility.
It still pushes the top of the monitor so far away that visibility, I mean, you kind of have to hunch over it at some point, so if you could, you know, experiment a little bit and pick the angle up a little bit, I think that would be very helpful.
So those are good feedbacks from you, because that's probably the most extreme we would be in terms of the monitor angle and then based upon, you know, if we do a well system, we have a lot more flexibility in terms of what angle the monitor is at. It's always a combination of the angle, but also where the cutoff point is. And we're showing it as a pretty drastic line here, but it could be a smoother line and less of a drop-off depending on how it all works out.
What's the cost difference, if any?
There's probably not a huge cost difference because it's gonna be a specialty item anyway. It's not like you're going and picking it up off the shelf, it'll be a custom piece. So as long as it's spec, there shouldn't be a lot of cost differentiation.
So the well would allow for less of an angle in the monitor?
Yes. Again, it's all a play in terms of eyesight and that, from that perspective. And again, the lighting will be a lot better, so I don't think you'll see the glare. Our goal for the lighting is really to be mostly indirect lighting in terms of ambient lighting and then there will be, of course, cameras, camera lighting that's pointed more directly at you and more directly at staff and the other positions, but those will be actually integrated into the ceiling. So like in this room, you know, we have the dropdown camera lights. Those would actually be up inside those panels that we talked about in terms of the wave.
And option two allows for better line of sight from folks physically in the audience, or is it about the same?
It's possible, it just depends on how steep the grade is or how steep the angle is on that monitor. It would be very difficult for us to replicate the current monitor system and give you visibility. So, you know, like right now, if you look at anybody from my position, I really only see really the top portion of someone's head because of the monitor. So if you're wanting it to be at that angle, it's probably gonna be pretty severe. And the question might be then, is it better to have the monitor showing? You know, we can make sure that we're getting monitors that don't have as much logo on them as the ones that we currently have. There will also be more space between each of you under the new scenario. So it's not quite as tight as what's being showed at the dais now with those larger monitors, but we would like to move to that size. So again, it's finding the right combination of those things and really, we're gonna have to experiment and that's why we're gonna need to know what you're thinking, but we won't be able to give you, you know, exactly everything that somebody might desire. So here's kind of the configuration and these do look pretty similar. This is kind of the angle that you're looking at, your dais tonight, at least on the left-hand side of me and then there'll be some ports and other aspects that you'll have access to. And that's one of the reasons that the well gets more complicated when we interject that item into it. Because we'll have to figure out how those get placed and how accessible they are if we're actually dropping that down a little bit lower. Under that scenario, and these get really pretty graded, you can see the assumption would be you'd be about maybe at shoulder, not quite at shoulder height if you're sitting straight up in your chair.
This accommodates joint hearings with the planning commission?
It would. All but one person of the planning commission could sit at the main dais and then there would actually be a planning commissioner who would need to sit down here, one of them. Because we just couldn't make the dais any wider, given the size of the room. We have tried to look at all the uses, not only just mayor and council, but planning commission, board of appeals, to try to integrate and make the best product that we can. I can't say that everybody gets everything they want, but we are looking at those options. So option two, this pretty much looks the same. Again, from your perspective, it might be a slight change in angle, but from this rendering, it's difficult to tell. But as you can see, you actually see a lot more of the individual person. It's dropped down to more almost chest height and that's with dropping the monitor down into the well.
That's what I was getting at earlier with line of sight from the audience.
So it is easier to do that. If you guys find that elevation slightly, it may actually come up a little bit if we move the monitor a little bit more.
Do you see any cleaning issues with the well? Dirt falls in?
I mean, there's always, there won't be issues. It does pose a long-term problem for us if we change monitors or other things. It's harder to modify those and stay within the well size. You know, I can't predict what happens in five or 10 years in terms of monitors. So the flat surface is easier for us to maintain, but we do realize that there's a combination of these things that is important. So, you know, we wouldn't have presented the well option if we didn't think that was something we could actually work with or accommodate. You know, the other option again that we haven't shown you is leave the monitor visible and drop the dais height below to a certain level, just like we have now. It will be more visible because in reality, you see more movement, you see arm movement behind the dais now because there's space in between each of the monitors and that space will be probably roughly the same as you have now between the monitors, only with bigger monitors.
So do you need some guidance?
Yeah, so these are some, we provided some aerial views so you can see a little bit better in terms of the room layout. Again, this would be the same for everybody at the dais and then this is more of the room configuration, what it would look like if you're a bird in the sky.
Do you have a preference?
We don't necessarily have a preference, you know, we have ideas that, you know, the well concerns us in terms of maintenance, but I think that's something we can accommodate. If there's gonna be a major change in technology, we're more than likely gonna have to modify more than just the well. We would have to modify other things in that. And again, of course, for those of you who don't know, this dais has actually been modified over time. The original dais is actually underneath and that's that big thick part right by your kneecaps maybe. And then the extension or the cantilever over that is what the modifications were when this portion was designed. So we don't have a problem one way or the other, we just wanna know kind of what's the greater weight. You know, for instance, is it really, really important to the council to have more body being shown? Or is the angle more important? And is the well advantage or disadvantage? I mean, the one thing about the well is you have less room space in terms of side space because these spaces won't be really usable for you. I mean, you could put your phone down there or something like that, but it's not accessible. We probably have some lip too, so things don't roll off.
How does that width for the portion that is above the well compare to what we have now?
It's a foot and a half.
So it says?
One foot six.
One foot six inches?
The depth. I think it's about this, you're actually gonna have a little bit more in front of you depending on how the monitor sets. But again, in this case, you know, you have to have the keyboard, the thing, the difference is it'll feel better because the monitor will be further, a little bit further away.
Well, I'm a fan of option two for a couple of reasons. First, because it allows us to get a better angle on the monitor and secondly, and probably more importantly for me, is, you know, we wanna emphasize transparency, I think, as part of this design. And, you know, this is government in action, so the idea that even if it's only slightly better, the idea that it's easier for folks in the audience to see more of the council members, I kinda like that. And easier for us to see the audience, I would imagine, as well.
Neil? Well, I think from, I just completely agree with what Ryan just said. I think the angle of the monitor is a bit of an issue from what we're looking at here. And yeah, it's being, the way the monitors have been set up here and with the way they're set up in front of you folks is more of a barrier than I've ever been comfortable with, so fixing that is a good thing. Rob?
No, I kinda like option one. I mean, I understand what Ryan's saying with option two, but you can see more of me with option two, with either option than Ryan.
That's true.
But they're both fine to me. Because I think when we were talking before, you said that the glare that's on these monitors currently is not the experience we would have in the other room.
Yeah, the difficulty in this room is there are can lights directly above you, so the can light is reflecting off of that.
Have you come over and set in back of these with? Have you come over and set in back of these with the stuff is way up here?
I was beckoned when I first entered the room and shown it. But my feelings are, are kind of just on the fence, so.
I'm kind of in the same way, but I, I can just be just as happy with option two. So if that's the direction we want to go, then I'm fine with it.
It sounds like, you know, not necessarily a consensus, but the going trend for that.
But it's not, I mean, it's no opposition to it. No opposition to option two.
Again, we'll just have to pick one because, you know, we're in the 75% design stage. So we're at the point where moving to 95. So it sounds like that would be the best option based upon the comments I've heard tonight. And again, the scenarios that we've shown you are really the worst-case scenario. You can see this is fairly close to where the presentation table is. So the further back you are, the more you're actually going to see of someone's body, just from the perspective standpoint.
Is there a possibility of to put a raised lip on it so my drink doesn't migrate over the edge?
We'll probably put some edge piece where the drop occurs.
Need some cup holders?
Maybe a drink cozy down in the well.
We could. It'd be difficult. So really, that gives us enough direction on the dais. The next part is, we want to really talk about the community room and whether the council wants to move towards full audiovisual equipment in that room. The way we've worked it out is, as we've talked before, is the council chambers and the overflow space, which is the gallery in this current building, is need of replacement for the audiovisual. So a portion of that funding is actually coming from the reserve fund. The discussion I'm having now is, this is not in the reserve fund and is not currently, we, we plan for it in the scope in terms of estimating some costs, but we want to know whether the council really wants to move forward with that. Typically, in the community room spaces, the most we provide is some type of dropdown screen. And then we rely on bringing in some type of mic podium or some type of projector that's brought in for the space. We don't have those actually permanently installed in there. So really, if you go to the activity center, they'll have pull-down screens or dropdown screens, but that's about it in terms of the community room. What we're asking for feedback on from the council tonight is, do you want that room to do a little bit more than that? So some of the scenarios that we have played out in our mind and the best, the most recent one I can think of is, you know, we have work sessions, but we often have work sessions that involve multiple jurisdictions, not on a regular basis, but every now and then. So if everyone remembers back, I think it's almost been a year. We had a work session at the Casey Community Center where we invited the county in Rockville. And we set up, but we didn't have the capability of doing any audiovisual at that point. So the county actually came over and filmed that particular meeting for us. What we're asking for tonight is, and we've designed it in a way that you could actually do a work session, whether it was this type of work session or one that was a joint work session between either the planning commission or other bodies. This could actually be set up in a U configuration or actually a square configuration. We do have enough room and these probably would move back. With that would be two screens that are dropdown screens and then three cameras and a projector, two projectors, probably one here and then one also here. Because in terms of visibility, the public would use this view and then anybody working within the session, unless you're over here, would use this view and these people hopefully would use that. The cost for this...
Is this meant for committee meetings as well?
Committee meetings, at least the ones that we televise, would probably still take place in the council chambers unless we made a change. But the community room is available for other committees and we've looked at that for them. But there are a number of committees, like transportation committee that don't televise, they don't tape. Those aren't shown to the public. And we currently don't have the staff to do that. You know, that would take additional staff to add those to those viewing options.
No, what I'm just talking about for a meeting space, for example, for economic development, which isn't taped or broadcast, but is a fairly good-sized group that meets in upstairs today. Would we, would you just be playing to use this as the venue for those meetings?
That would be one of them. And then there's the other thought too, that we would also probably in this building, once the council chambers moves, we would actually convert a portion of this space to some type of meeting space. It may not be all of it because that's one of the conflicts we have with this building is we're actually bringing everybody up who needs to meet with anybody to the gallery space. And so that becomes difficult in terms of access and all of that. So we would probably use a combination of this community room and a future space in this location.
You could also use the overflow room too.
I just don't know what's being reconfigured in this, in this building. So, I mean, one thing you're greatly lacking is small meeting rooms for staff. Just you get it grouped together from a department.
So we have done a facility need study for this building this year where we asked the departments what their needs were. And we'll be coming back in terms of analyzing that and determining how to best use the gallery and how to best use this space. And that will also make some determinations of who occupies the remaining portion of the third floor at 16 South Summit. One of the things that we need is a training room. When we do computer training, to be honest, this is where we do it. Or we have to coordinate with the Montgomery College and use their training room space to actually do it.
So the square icon in the middle of this is the pillar, right? Load-bearing pillar, a column?
Cannot be removed.
Okay, cannot be removed. I guess, sort of piggybacking on what Neil was asking, I'm, my challenge is, is I'm trying to figure out what are the different uses that this room is going to be used for? Because that is going to inform whether we think it's worth investing in additional audio/video capabilities. So if we're going to have, I don't know, you know, I'm just sort of imagining multicultural affairs events, you know, with, you know, cool presentations of different cultures or, you know, dance presentations and things like that in this community room that would be neat to be able to televise in addition to perhaps other committee meetings, that seems to make sense to me. If what we're talking about is really only, you know, once or twice a year, a special work session or a special joint session with the county council or city of Rockville or something, I'm not sure that it becomes as worthwhile. So I, I'm trying to sort of wrap my head around what we're going to use this space for that would justify the audio/video.
I mean, I think one thing, one way to think of it is, how do we use the gallery currently? Because really, the overflow room and the gallery are completely different spaces in the new building because of the sheer size differential between them. So a lot of the receptions would be likely held in this location. I could see if you were doing programming events related to some outside event like the book festival or something else, using this room as a presentation room. You know, you might have other presentations made in this room, whether they're filmed or not filmed would be the issue. That would be really an expansion. I always want everybody to keep in mind that filming just doesn't occur by itself.
Right.
So not only do you have a cost associated with the equipment, and I can give you numbers on that, but you would have additional cost associated with staff.
Sure, sure.
To make that occur. You know, that's why I'm saying like transportation committees, unlikely we would televise those meetings. But you might, for an event, you might actually show a movie or some other thing. We're not intending the community room to be a general rental room. We do see it as if Old Town needed a space to have a neighborhood meeting or something like that. We would work with them to do it. But we're not looking to have, you know, bar mitzvahs or birthday parties here in this space. It's really going to be more of a controlled access space.
Okay. Well, that, that's, that's helpful. And I guess the other question is, if we have, you know, portable videography equipment, you know, or we invest in future portable videography equipment, couldn't that be used here in lieu of stationary camera investment? And still, you know, achieve the same goal of being able to, to video different events that occasionally happen here?
Yes, we could do it. It won't be probably of the same quality because it's, you know, it's never quite the same when you're in a mobile aspect. We have looked at if we're going to do that, making sure that we have jacks and stuff in right locations in that column and several walls that that would be accommodated. It's really the back feed-in that becomes more difficult. So you can film it, but then how do you get it back to the production studio to make it happen? That's the big difference with having roaming camera in that type of facility.
Okay. What's the cost of doing the installed camera equipment?
So roughly between 70 and 80,000 for the equipment. And we're, we would project somewhere between 20 and 30,000 for building modifications. Because some of the things are, do you put acoustical tile in the ceiling? And if you're actually going to get the quality of sound that you want. We are looking at trying to not do mics, but do some type of ceiling-mounted mic. That would be easier to maintain and set up than having to come and set up the mics all the time. So roughly between, you know, 100 and 110,000 extra dollars just to do that component. That includes just the hard costs, not the soft costs that might be associated with any other aspect.
Got it. Okay.
So I think I'm on the same page with you as far as the bar mitzvahs is concerned. But, you know, it is a community room and I would think that if we can figure out how to adequately secure it, that it should, I, I would think there's a lot of organizations that would like to, community-based organizations that would be looking for inexpensive places to hold meetings. So no dancing, no DJs, but just the ability to, to have something in the area where they can hold some caucus or informational meeting, something like that. Now, the question would be, how would we secure the room? How would we work it out so people have access to the room? And if we were to install $100,000 worth of equipment in there, how to make sure nobody damages our $100,000 worth of equipment?
Yeah, I mean, part of the issue too is balancing, we already have a number of those spaces within our portfolio. You know, we have the activity center, which is really pretty near city hall. We have Casey, we have the senior center, we have the arts barn. We, and we have the mansion. The question is, is it a free space? Is it not a free space? Those are all kind of policy decisions. And again, all those things come with setup, so they include staff time. We do, we currently do not have a staff person that would be assigned to do setup for that particular room. Whereas all those other facilities have staff that are associated with setup and breakdown and cleanup with those. We'd have to regroup on how we're going to use that room if we actually extend the offer to a lot of community use. We do see it used on occasion, but I think we would probably rather direct people somewhere else from a security standpoint and the other viewpoints.
Makes sense. And I mean, I would imagine there's, there's not a lot of unmet demand in all those other spaces. In other words, if somebody wants a room, there's, there are rooms to be had.
Evidence flows, you know, the activity center is probably the most programmed space. Casey is, has some. And then it's also a degree of, is it free or is it not free? We don't really provide free space to most organizations under our structure because again, it costs us to operate even at a minimal level, these facilities. So that's another line.
The prices are very reasonable, especially for residents and resident organizations.
I don't know about the Cameron's mansion, but the rest, oh, that's the wedding, I think those prices are very reasonable.
They would pick this because it's the newest facility. And then it won't be the newest facility very long.
Yeah, I think based on, based on everything you've said, you know, it seemed like a nice idea, but it, it's not really necessary and probably there's a lot more negatives than, in using this space as a general-purpose public space.
Both of the libraries, I think, allow community groups to use their space for free when it's available. Gaithersburg and Quins Orchard.
I want to push back though a little bit on this and just remind everybody that when we were having earlier discussions about the design of the building, there was, I think, a strong sort of thematic intent to make sure that it felt like an open building, that it was part of the community. As much as there's a lot of respect for the police department, we didn't want it to feel like a fortress. And I think the idea of including a community room that was open for some sort of use by the public, maybe not, you know, birthdays and bar mitzvahs, but some use, some reasonable use, was part of that message, I think, that we were trying to send with, with the investment in this building. So something to think about as we have this discussion about whether or not, you know, we want to make this room a little bit more available. Because at least, as I recall, that was part of the discussion initially.
That's what I was envisioning with it as well. I mean, with the uses that you're talking about excluding a, a community function for the community room, is there enough use? I mean, does this now become a superfluous space that could be accommodated elsewhere in the building? And then could we dedicate it to something else?
I would have to say that there probably, the use will fill it in some extent. So transportation committees held at public works, that's really not a conducive space for a public meeting. Partly because it's controlled access, it actually has ADA issues. So those probably would move to here. Economic development would probably move to here, Old Town would probably move to here. So not on a regular basis, but in terms of scheduling, you know, at least during the week, there would be probably pretty good use of it, not full use. If you're leaning towards making it more of a community room, I would recommend not doing the AV.
Yeah, well, I, I agree with that.
Because the most we could do is probably provide some ports if we were going to have a speaker or something. Because again, one of the difficulties is this is on the ground floor. So we'd have to core into the floor to have kind of a podium space where if somebody was going to do a presentation on this back screen, we would have a podium space back here that they could present from. And that would be a minimal expense.
Just thinking about the amount of usage, not public usage, I, I don't see the cost justification for installing expensive AV materials.
I think if, if it's a staff recommendation to, that we would get a lot of use out of the AV equipment in this, then we'd like to know a number of examples of things that we couldn't otherwise do, that we would be able to do if we had the AV equipment in this room.
I mean, I can think of a few things. I mean, you know, it's always the caveat, if you build it, they will come. So I'm sure staff can come up with numerous ideas on how to use the space from an audiovisual, whether that be Park and Rec or other individuals. I think we were trying to look at it more from, from my perspective more as, is the council wanting this as an auxiliary space for work sessions and stuff like that.
Well, I can see some of the things that we do currently in the gallery, like the environmental awards. We can do some, some neat programming things that, in addition to what we're already doing up there, like citizenship-type recognitions and things of that nature. I can see those, those kinds of uses, but I think Rob's point...
We're still half and few and far between.
That's right. I, I'm, I'm taking Rob's point that, you know, it's, it would, unless we can come up with a lot of it, where it's still a lot less utilized than it is utilized.
Yes, I would agree with that.
I mean, does the, the police side have its own training area for this type of...
This community room would also be used by the police department. So when they would hold meetings, they would use it too. And again, if we had other meetings that are associated with the city, we typically go to the activity center because that's the nearest building when we try to hold big public meetings. So if we had a meeting on CBSC, you know, Consumer Product Safety Commission meetings, we're all held at Park and Rec as opposed to City Hall. There will be other uses that come about. I'm not sure any of those relate to televised portions or where you need a lot of mic aspect to it. So I don't think it won't be used. I think we'll have to come up with some criteria of who gets to use it if it's outside the, outside the city, what community services we're going to offer for that facility just from a, even a security standpoint of how do we close it? Because, you know, this building doesn't have staff associated with it at night, whereas there was other buildings do. So we would have to make accommodations for someone to be over here. And things like that also play into how much you use it for other uses outside the city organization. Because if the city's using it, there's always a staff member who would be responsible to make sure the building gets locked up, the doors get locked up, or everyone's out by nine o'clock. If that's the hourly pick to close the building, which is when the police function really stops from a building occupancy standpoint. You know, they close the main window at nine o'clock.
If we had a bare minimum, we'd probably have to rename it from a community multipurpose room if the community's not allowed and it's one purpose is that city usage.
Again, it's still vision for the community, but there are always gradations of line. So does that mean any, you know, nonprofit organization can come and request it? Whether they're located in Gaithersburg or not located in Gaithersburg? Can churches request it? I mean, those are things we'd have to play out in terms of use. And that's something we haven't really talked through the whole way. Really, at this point is, if we were going to have a lot of audiovisual equipment in there, we would not even have that discussion because it would be too difficult to control that space.
So what's a lot? So what's a lot? So in terms of audiovisual equipment, I think this room could really benefit from having some big screens that you can connect your computer to for a meeting. As a, and, but then there's a big gap between that and having remote-controlled cameras and things for broadcasting, which may not be necessary at this point.
So the core, basically, what we would think of would be roughly, even with that, is about thirty thousand for that equipment. That would be kind of with two projectors or one project, you know, it's a varying degree of how well we plan that out, or one projector and one screen. But again, part of the problem with this space is, anything that we do in terms of audiovisual has to come in the floor. So that's why the floor, the costs for construction are hard, because I have, you have to drill a hole in the, I mean, you have to cut a hole in the floor, all the way back to where you're going to. So in order for me to put a drop here, I have to cut this all out and then figure out where it's going, if it's here or here or there. And all that costs money in terms of the building construction. So, you know, the simplest thing for me would be a dropdown screen, and then I provide electrical connections on the column, and that would be the simplest thing, because those things are already going to be pretty easy to accommodate. But any audiovisual, even if it's a mic stand or a podium stand, does increase the cost, and so, you know, you're talking still in that thirty to forty thousand range for me to accomplish that.
So as far as the city functionality, so what you envision, if we didn't let the community in there and it was all city usage, could you make do with a portable AV equipment, where you, somebody just brings it in and splits it on table and projects?
Yes, you can always, you know, make do with that aspect. And so that's one thing that we would look at. Again, we're on a budget, so unless I get more funding, I got to go back and look at what the budget is for the police station facility, because this room is also envisioned, not really as the council chambers move, this is related to the police station and what we originally envisioned in the scope.
Yeah, and the, the meetings that we hold here today in City Hall that are not in this room, typically, we have screens and projectors, and it doesn't seem to be causing any great issues. I think, you know, a TV connected to a laptop is, is a step up, but if it's a hardship, or if it's very expensive, it's, it's hard to justify at this point based on the kind of usage we're seeing.
We, we could evaluate whether we can, because, you know, the only central point that we have for the drop is right here. So if we can make the drops in here for the connections, then it becomes more practical, because I don't have to cut through the floor.
As opposed to having just wires running along the floor? I mean, I go to corporate conference rooms all the time, there are wires.
It just gets harder in terms of setup and takedown and making sure that we're complying with all the safety requirements. We don't have, you know, like most corporations that I've seen work, they actually have a group that, you know, we do have IT, but that's not their core function, is to set up rooms. You know, the Activity Center will have a group of people that help with that. We don't have anybody for this building to do that, so unless, you know, those all add up in terms of laying out the lines, putting that, the cover over the line to make sure nobody trips and all of that. So we do try to make it as practical as possible.
Okay.
Because I know what happens when we don't do that, is no one will put the covering over this thing, and then we'll have issues. So it sounds like you're not leaning towards the filming, the full audiovisual, that you would like maybe some combination where we would actually be able to have a mic and a podium, or something to that effect. Some of those things can come in later in terms of a wireless mic system, or, or things like that, that we're not incorporating, but-
I agree. I think that's what you're seeing here.
Yeah, I think.
Hard to justify the, you know, the full-scale investment, otherwise.
Would it be the same cost if you installed it in the overflow room?
Overflow room will actually have a, probably a projector and a monitor and a screen, just because it's going to function as the overflow room, similar to the way the gallery does. It's just that it's not as big a space as the gallery. So it's unlikely you would hold receptions and things like that in the overflow space. It's really, its combination is really conference room overflow space, as opposed to presentation overflow space like the gallery is upstairs.
But like the Transportation Committee or-
The Transportation Committee could meet in that room also, so it's going to have all those functions, and those are semi-included in the six hundred thousand, because we're looking at replacing what we have here in terms of overflow, not presentation space of the gallery, but overflow in the council chambers, at least in terms of equipment. There will be some add-ons for the equipment, just because there's new technology. So for instance, we're trying to make sure, you know, with the connections, we have a Facebook, you know, there are different switches for different things. 4K, do we do 4K? Because that's the going trend, and, you know, that's probably going to happen in our lifetimes. So do we accommodate for that with this new purchase? So there is a little bit more expense than what's-
You say 4K, you're talking about the quality of the television screen, the monitors, or?
Even what you project out and stuff like that, in terms of, because you can't send a 4K signal if you don't have the adapter equipment to send a 4K signal. It's the same thing, I think, we're having somewhat a difficulty with Facebook because of those issues, in terms of what the current equipment is capable of.
Broadcasting on Facebook.
You know, we have a component for that option, and a replacement. So it's not full, you know, like kind replacement, there's always upgrades in technology that come along that we have to accommodate.
Are you trying to say that technology improves over time?
Hopefully it does.
Okay, I think we noticed that.
If we get to a point it doesn't, I'm not sure I want to be here.
We'll build it all, we'll build it all on 5G. We'll have small cell.
Just as a final point, if, if all of the committees that you mentioned could meet in the overflow room and have that functionality in there, I'm kind of losing vision on if we don't put the community in this community room, what its purpose is.
Not all the committees can, because it depends on the size of the committee. I mean, that room has a limited space capacity.
I mean, it looks like a good thirty, forty seats.
No, not unless we set it up that way. And again, so I mean, you could do this, but this really isn't conducive to a committee meeting, because there's no tables or anything in it. You're really-
I wish we had that many people.
You're really pretty much set if the committee's going to meet to this scenario. And is that scenario for certain committees acceptable when you have public? Probably not. You know, a number of committees don't have a lot of public participation, but we could get some, you know, chairs along here for the public to set, where they could set at the table. But some committees have more members than-
Yeah, but Economic Development Committee wouldn't fit in that setup.
So we would end up putting them in this space, in terms of the community room.
Not to beat a dead horse, just think about it, please.
Think about-
Allowing more community access to the community room.
I think we're willing to look at that issue, especially if we're not having, you know, high-dollar AV equipment in there.
Well, it's also a budget issue, right? If suddenly we have to have an extra person, that's more expensive than, you know, in the long run especially, than having a bunch of AV equipment. So I'd, I'd only support it if we really felt that there was a need and there was a value in, in doing that sort of thing.
I mean, do you require it to be manned, if the-
We would want it to be manned to some degree, partly because you got to have setup, you got to have breakdown, you got to have cleanup, if you do all that. You know, we currently don't allow individuals to use City Hall that aren't City Hall staff in terms of association, and then you have security issues, especially, you know, I'm probably more likely to allow the community room use for the public than the conference room use, or the overflow room.
Okay.
But I think we can work all that out, and we'll come back with some plan of how this is going to be.
It's going to be a marginal setting revenue stream if we charge something for the room.
And then there's also how do you, who collects the fee and who administers when we lease that room? Is it Park and Rec? Is it somebody at City Hall? These, I'll get down to the nitty-gritty of how that room really functions. Is it on the list that you can actually see, or is it just?
It's all great questions.
So the next steps are, we'll be, work, continue to work with the Schrader Group, and then we have Washington Professional Systems, who's helping us with the acoustical portions. They will help design the AV portions of the building and probably install those as part of the council chambers project. We're anticipating bidding the full project, both the police station and the council chambers, sometime with the release in either late summer or early fall, and then starting construction in the spring of nineteen is the current schedule.
And completing construction when?
About a year from the initial start date. And I have no idea how the tariff will affect this project, because it does have quite a bit of aluminum in it. Not only just the steel studs, but you have to think long-term of what does that do to the furniture costs related to that, because most of those have major aluminum complaints.
So we should lobby our congressman right now?
I'm hoping that there'll be exemptions for those countries that need exemptions.
So that, that said, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? Well, it's going twice. Okay, not seeing anyone. All right, well, thank you, thank you guys very much for your presentation. Was that all you got, Dennis?
Yeah, again, really, the next time, unless you guys want to see something else, would be when we come back to you with the contract for the whole project.
Okay, that looks really nice. Very exciting. Thank you all very much for the presentation. Next regular meeting of the mayor and council is a week from today, March nineteenth, seven thirty PM, right here at City Hall. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.